Pledges to our flag. Heavenly Father, we just want to come and stop and take just a moment to ask you and to welcome you and invite you into this meeting and these proceedings. Go before us as the city council, along with our staff and along with our citizens, talk about, discuss, and move the agenda as well as the business of this city. May we always, when we gather, stop and ask for you to protect each one of our first responders. May they be in police or fire or even in our public works areas. Be with each and every one of them, protect them, protect them along the roadside, protect them in any particular danger that they may come in contact, even tonight and in the days and the months and the years ahead. Bless this city. Continue to have your hand upon us as we deliberate the very serious business of this city. May we do all things in your glory and your honor. In Jesus' name. Amen. Can you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you for that. Welcome each and every one of you to our city council meeting. This is your city hall, so we thank you for being and joining us tonight. Madam Secretary, I understand we had some citizens comments delivered, correct? All right. So I think we have one that is wanting to speak under general comments, and then we have several others that have signed up for specific items. We will get to those as we move through the agenda. So with that, Mayor Proton, would you present those for general comment?
Yes, Mayor. Adrian Hernandez. Did he leave the chamber?
He did. If it's okay, we'll go to public hearing number one. We get to the public hearing, he'll be in here, and then we'll come back to that one citizen's comment. Any objections to that from the council? I think none. All right. We'll just go to public hearing number one. We'll come back to general comments. With that, we move to public hearing number one. Here he is. Yes. Instead of going backwards, we'll just...
Adrian, you know the drill. If you state your name, address, we'll give you some time to speak. And I'll have it up on the clock. Thank you for coming out.
Adrian Hernandez here on behalf of Keep Pearland Beautiful. Our address is 5800 Magnolia Parkway, Airline 77584. Mayor and council, just wanted to real quickly give you an update, sorry, I came down the stairs, on Keep Pearland Beautiful's impact for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. So I'm here delivering this report on behalf of our board of directors and staff for Keep Pearland Beautiful. As I think everyone up there is aware, we have a long and storied history with the city here, starting in 1982 as clean Pearland. Keep Pearland Beautiful now operates the Stella Roberts Recycling Center on Magnolia in addition to all the community programs that we oversee, including the adoptive spots, which oversee roughly 75 miles of roadway here in the city of Pearland. In addition to that, we do community-wide cleanups at our various parks, roadways throughout the city as well. And so all of those volunteer efforts combined, each year, give a very, very clear picture of what our community prioritizes, and that is a clean, green, and beautiful community. So real quickly, going to run you through our four focus areas, give you an update. Taking me a lot longer to catch my breath than I thought. Okay, they said it would happen when you turned 40, but I didn't want to believe it. All right. Real quickly, first, we'll talk about litter prevention. So our fiscal year is from October to September, so in that time period last year, throughout the various intersections here at the city of Pearland, we collected 8,113 cigarette butts. This number is slightly down over the year preceding, but I wanted to maybe color that in a little bit after I go through the rest of these numbers. Pounds of litter collected through cleanup efforts were 7,735. This year, we had active, now, we have total 77 adoptive spots, but we had active 51 adoptive spots, and we are looking to revamp that program to reengage the community here. Across those 51 spots, we collected 592.91 bags of trash, and that was a total number of volunteer hours for all of these efforts, equalling 14,266 volunteer hours. Now, I said that I wanted to maybe provide a little bit of color on those numbers. We actually, at Keep Pearland Beautiful, think that having less litter collected year over year is a good thing because it shows that our community is making an active, ongoing effort to keep our streets, roadways, waterways clean. So whenever we see those reduction in numbers, it's actually for us a very good positive thing. We want to see continual reduction year over year. Real quickly, run you over beautification. Beautification, we had over 2,000 garden lecture views. We had 300 trees given out at Arbor Day events this year. Last year, we collected 258 Christmas trees from residents here towards Dune Days, and then we produced 419.5 pounds of produce that was delivered to our Pearland Neighborhood Center, to our food bank. And then at our annual meeting, the new representative from our Pearland Neighborhood Community Garden, which is under the KPB umbrella, said that we actually had closer to 600, even through all of the drought issues and stuff that we experienced, our production was up. So this is the number that was donated, but we actually produced closer to 600 pounds. And then I'll give you, real quickly, the last and the big one here is recycling. And recycling through the Stella Roberts Recycling Center, this is in addition to curbside collection here in the city of Pearland. We had just under a million pounds, 962,621 pounds of recycled material, and that does not include e-waste, auto fluids, or reuse programs. We did start a reuse program here recently, and Josh, I see that, but I was, you know, organization five, yeah. All right. And so in addition to that 962,000 pounds, we also had a little over 2,000 televisions. We had right under 6,000 pieces of additional e-waste electronics. We had about 22,000 gallons of automotive fluids, not including brake fluid, which is in the HHW category, and then about 378,800 pounds of hazardous waste that came through the facility. So what does all of that mean? We mentioned that big number earlier, the 14,266. That number is directly correlating with the value that Keep Pearland Beautiful provides to our community, and this year, we had, and I think this is a great thing, that it shows that COVID impacts are no longer, I think, a thing for our community. I think people are comfortable getting out into the community and re-engaging, being there shoulder to shoulder, doing the work. Obviously, we still have to take into account measures that we've built into our operations, but people are more comfortable volunteering again. And so with that, we saw a 20% increase year over year in the value provided to the community. So in the 2022-23 fiscal year, Keep Pearland Beautiful volunteers being out on our streets and our parks, even on our waterways, keeping our storm drains clean, produced 427,266.70 in value given back to the city of Pearland. And so with that, Mayor, again, on behalf of our volunteers, on behalf of the board of directors, and the staff at Keep Pearland Beautiful, we greatly value the city's support. We greatly value our partnership with the city of Pearland and look forward to even greater impact next year. And thank you, everyone here in this room, for keeping Pearland clean, green, and most importantly, beautiful.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. That recycle center and all that you do over there greatly helps with reducing all of that in our community and collecting it and safely removing it. So with that, that was all of our general comments. Everything else is tied to a specific item, and we will get to those as we move forward. With that, public hearing number one, we will move into that. Mr. Coker, if you would read the reason for the public hearing and then move right into the staff report.
Yes, Mayor. Council members and members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to lead into this public hearing and just to let the council know, this is a public hearing for the construction of a reinvestment zone. And so let me just elaborate a little bit on what a reinvestment zone is. But before getting to that, I want to explain, Josh, could you pull up the aerial that's in that agenda item? This is, you'll see that green box there, this is the area where we're looking to create a reinvestment zone. The business that's currently located there is Brask Inc., and in 2011, they built an approximate 100,000 square foot building there, and now they're looking to expand. And as part of that expansion, they approached the city and made application for a tax abatement. The issue with the tax payment is you can't do a tax payment in Texas unless you first create a reinvestment zone. And that's what tonight's public hearing is to do, is to consider and a tax, excuse me, the creation of a zone within the boundaries of this, the green box you see. And again, that's industrial boulevard, and it's essentially close to its intersection with State Highway 35. Brask is now looking to expand. They want to build a 40,000 square foot facility, manufacturing facility, and then another additional 9,500 square feet in office space, and with an approximate $12.5 million investment in the city with these improvements. And so tonight, the purpose of the public hearing is, again, to create this reinvestment zone, and as part of that, you're trying to find that the improvements that are being constructed, if you create the zone, then you're making a determination that those improvements will benefit the zone. And so in just a moment, we'll afford public testimony, if anybody wants to speak, in favor of or against, offer testimony with respect to creation of the zone. The zone, there will be an item on the agenda after this for the council to take action because to create a reinvestment zone, it takes two readings because it is an ordinance. So the first reading of that would be this evening. Second reading would be on December the 11th. And then I want to reiterate this as well. This is not voting on a tax payment tonight. This is only voting on the creation of a reinvestment zone. If the council is inclined to consider the tax payment and grant that, that would be up for consideration by resolution on the December 18th council agenda. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
All right. Before that, we will open it up for the public hearing, for the public to weigh in. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed reinvestment zone can go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Second call for that request, anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, then we will move it to city council for questions, comments, concerns. I had one quick question. Mr. Coker, when was the last time we actually did a reinvestment zone? I know it's been a few years.
I believe it was 2018. It's been approximately five years.
So I asked that question because this isn't an everyday occurrence or an every year occurrence. It's pretty rare that we actually go through this full process. Open it up for questions, comments from council. Mr. Carbone?
Just looking at that map, I mean, industrial has a lot of older businesses and some that have expanded. Is there a reason to have the zone limited to just this property? Or would it ever make sense? We talked about retention and expansion of small business to expand it to potentially capture most of industrial.
Well, the duration of a zone is the maximum of 10 years, and so if you create it over a larger area, you always risk, if nothing is ripe for development in that area, then you would possibly have to come back later to do that at a later date. And so traditionally, we've taken them on a project-by-project basis. There are areas and some communities where they know that there's going to be a large development area where they're anticipating that in a future date, and they may create larger zones, but it's something that could be done if the council ever chose to do so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Cam Carr?
Darren, just more clarification. What this item will be is, do dollars come to the city, get remitted back, or do dollars gets never owed? As opposed to a TURs versus some other...
Right. This is not a reimbursement. Those taxes are just simply abated and would not be paid.
And for the creation of this, there's an assumption of a timeline for them to engage in construction moving forward?
Yes. A tax payment agreement would require, we would have a jobs component, a certain amount of jobs, a certain amount of investment into the improvements, and there would be clawback provisions in that as well. And generally speaking, the city does not abate 100% of the taxes. It would only be a percentage of taxes.
In this case, it's not speculative?
That's correct.
Hernandez?
Oh. Along that same line, as far as the different incentives that are given versus what needs to be promised to do that, will we gain that knowledge at the next meeting, or are we moving forward with, you know, y'all are going to work out the details after?
With respect to the actual terms of an abatement?
Yes.
Yes. So those terms have actually been applied for, and they've already signed an agreement. That agreement will not be presented to council until after the zone is created, but I believe that's information that the council had previously discussed through prior communications.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Can we just real quickly say what previous agreements that we gave or had with Brask and kind of how they performed on the previous expectations?
Matt, I'm going to go ahead and defer to you for that question. Thank you.
You know, when they first came to Pearland in 2010, 2011, we provided them tax abatement for that building that sits there now, and they performed, I can't remember how many jobs and those kinds of things. It wasn't off the top of my head what their jobs and investment is, but they performed.
They met expectations.
They met the terms of the agreement.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, as long as they've met it before, I see no issue with this. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we will close this document, public hearing, and move to new business item number one. Mr. Carbone, would you present that item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance 1632, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We've had staff report as well as input and council questions, so Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Cozo?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you for that. Moving to public hearing number two. Martin back there tonight. Martin, would you please read into the record the reason for the public hearing and then move right into the staff report?
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor. So this public hearing number two, this is a request by Booze Development Group, represented by Jag Secong applicant on behalf of BEFM 518 Realty LTD owner, for approval of a conditional use permit to allow auto wash use within the general business district on approximately 1.2085 acres of land. This property is generally located at the southeast corner of Broadway and Smith Road. So here you can see the aerial and zoning of the property. It's surrounded by a general business on three corners and followed by a property that's outside of the city limits on the fourth corner. The future land use plan has this area as retail offices and services, and the auto wash use is a use that would be allowed within that area. The area is surrounded by a variety of commercial and retail uses. There's retail uses to the north and west of this property, and then undeveloped property to the south and east. There are a variety of different types of car washes within the one mile, two mile, and three mile areas. There are three within one mile, one that's outside of Pearland. There are eight within two miles, includes two that are outside, and then there are 11 within three miles with three outside of the city of Pearland. So this property was annexed in 1996, and then the property has kind of remained undeveloped and vacant, and then property was platted for development earlier this year. You can see that development activity taking place on these photographs. This is views from Broadway Street. Then this is their proposed site plan. You can see the driveway entering into the tunnel car wash. And this is their proposed landscape plan. Some proposed elevations. So as mentioned, this meets the established criteria for approval. It's also consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use designation, and staff recommends approval with the condition that the exterior building facade be developed in substantial conformance with the materials that are depicted in the renderings. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the conditional use permit with staff condition, and that staff condition is copied here. So with that, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
All right. Thank you. That is the applicant present. You have a presentation, or you're just here to answer a question? Okay. Sounds good. If we have some questions, then we'll certainly bring them to you. Are you part of the applicant? Oh, well, when we're about to go to for and against, and you can ask your question during that opportunity, is that okay? There we go. All right. So with that, we will move to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Can go to the podium, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. If you have a question for us, you can go to the podium and do that. And it doesn't have to be necessarily for or against, but if you have a question, now's the time to do that.
Ma'am, are you Ronnie Wang?
Yes.
Okay. So if you state your name, address, they'll give you three minutes to speak?
Yes. So I'm the, my name is Ms. Wang, and last name Wang, and first name Rong. And thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, giving me this opportunity to, you know, against this part because I'm the principal of the Houston Dragon Academy. We set up the Houston Dragon Academy, the main campus in the medical center, and another campus in the Pearland branch. We bought the land is next to the auto wash, the location, the next to this. So we bought it since 2020, that's during the COVID time. Unfortunately, the COVID time, we cannot open all the kids and students. During this time, we have the online class, and right now, we still open in the Pearland branch, but we still rent another school location. Here has land, we are planning to set up the school. The school is focused teaching the Mandarin and after-school program and weekenders program. Right now, we have the, during the main campus and Pearland branch, we have 500 students. We still need the, you know, get the city permit and set up the Pearland branch for school. For my concern for set up the auto wash, you know, all the, I'm think the school students' safety is very important for us. So this, the things, I'm so worried about if the auto wash and a lot of cars and a lot of people and go around for school, I really worry about my school students. So this is the first reason I against. And the second one, and I'm worried about if, you know, car wash and too loud, and you know, we want the school environment is very quiet place. So this is also I'm concerned, another point. And also, I with my colleague and he's the principal of Pearland branch, and Ms. Mr. Zhao, he also has some of the point, he concerned this part, so for the auto wash. So thank you, Mr. Zhao. Can you come here and show us your concerned point about this car wash?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. So do I also get three minutes?
Sir, could you please state your name and address?
Okay. My name is Peachun Zhao. I'm living in Houston, 525 Jason Street. So I come here as a colleague of Ms. Wang, also as kind of the representative for the Pearland branch. So I have more than 10 years' experience in medical field, so I've been working Boston Medical Center and the Texas Medical Center as a medical professional. I do have a pretty concern about the car wash, chemical, the potential risk to the children, especially for school who has the kids sitting there for five days a week instead of the normal, maybe people who get access to the place, just do a car wash once a week. Potential risk of the exposure to the chemical is totally different. Also, I don't know if the city council or any body, government body have this kind of evaluation or assessment of this kind of potential chemical risk to the people around, especially if there's a school and the children sitting there. So just a very common example of one of the possible components of car wash is the hydrofluoric acid, which is being regarded as a toxic compound from different organization, government body, it's a different regulation on this chemical. And I don't know if this can be a potential, things going to be used by this business, and what's their regulation or their business plan, or what they're going to use if there's a school and the children are going to sit in there, right? Also, the car wash will just give high pressure, I mean, flow, just wash out everything, everything going to get into the air, and come up with the wind, things going to blow everywhere, right? Just it could be micro nano drops in the air from the gel just floating around, and it just covers everything. Pretty much, you can imagine those things will be just blow by the wind and go to the school facility and the drop and cover all the things the kids could touch on their hands, maybe on the leg swing and whatever toys around. So it's a high risk for them to touch and put things in their, in their mouths. So those chemicals could be potential risk to the respiratory, the mucosa, the eyes, the skin, all those things. I think I need to see a very thorough evaluation assessment from authority, government, or maybe organization can give us a very good, clean explanation for the plan, if you want, guys want to approve this. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. If you wouldn't mind, get one of these forms from the podium outside and turn it into the city secretary's board.
That way we can tie your name and comments back to it. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Second request for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Yes, ma'am. Go to the podium, just please go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Smith.
You can pull that down so you don't have to go on your tiptoes. There you go.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Smith. I live at 5218 Beechnut Street, Houston, Texas. I am the project manager for this proposed new construction, Mr. Car Wash, and obviously, I would like to speak for that. I do understand what you're saying with the school, but the school's not there yet, and we have done everything that we are supposed to do, and that is required by the ordinances. Our drawings comply, and we are ready to move forward now. Like she mentioned earlier, she purchased the land in 2020, and we're going on 2024 and making request for us to accommodate a school that is not ready to move forward like we are. Doesn't really make that much sense to me, but...
Likewise, if you can give your name and address for the record, I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Scott Rolchen from Excel Engineering, we're the civil engineering firm that's been hired to work on this. I can list up to. Yeah, to address a couple of the items that were brought up, as far as the traffic, I mean, the use that is proposed is within the code, the condition use... The condition use permit was thoroughly vetted by the staff. The staff had no issues with the use and everything else that was happening on the site, along with the adjoining property. So I believe that traffic really shouldn't be an issue for the school at all. And as far as the chemical issues, I know with a facility like this, most, most, everything on the site is being recycled. As far as the water usage and everything else that goes on with the site. I guess that's the first time I've ever heard this brought up before as far as in an issue. I'm sure Mr. Carwash and/or the developer would be willing to help to, you know, show all the chemicals and/or soaps and everything else that's being used on the site to help alleviate any issues that are concerns that they might have, or that. And as far as the sound, um, you know, that it's a little hard to see if it's an issue or not until anything else gets built. And I know that Mr. Carwash, they're willing to, you know, address any issues if they were brought up at that point, you know, with any screening or, uh, you know, landscaping that would help abate that if it ever was an issue, which we do not feel that it will be an issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And then, uh, last and final time, anybody wishing to speak for or against this proposed request? All right, thank you. Y'all might hang out there. We may have some questions for you as we move to city council questions, comments. I would like, Josh, if you'll put the, it's, it's considered exhibit three. It's the abutment map that shows the properties around it. If it was in there, I know it's in the packet. I'm trying to get an idea of, of the property that Ms. Wang has. Is it south of the property? So the property immediately south, how many acres do you have? Two acres, okay, right here, okay. So I'm trying, just trying to get an idea of who's around what. And so I, I, I guess that's the first I've heard that, that chemicals in one of these car wash would be that, uh, would be that, uh, dangerous, given that these car washes are everywhere. Uh, and people run their cars through them, and people are watering and, and, and drying their vehicles with that same water. That was a little news to me that I wasn't too sure about. And then go to the site plan, show, I want to see what's, how it's abutting. So. I guess that's car. It's like those are not the existing build we're talking about, car wash over here. So is there any landscaping, Martin or Vance, is there any landscaping that's proposed? There we go. That's what I was looking for. From a noise perspective, would staff have a recommendation?
So previously on noise, issues with car washes, uh, we've had a recommendation, uh, and condition approved by council on other sites that basically had an enclosure around the vacuum system or to ensure that there, there wasn't a significant noise, uh, being produced at the property line. You know, that's a, a point that was briefly taught, talked about during the planning and zoning commission meeting, uh, but it didn't raise the level to introduce that as a condition.
Something for consideration, obviously. And you're planning to have five hundred students on a two acre site? Oh, okay, okay. Okay. All right, thank you. That, that helped me, that helped me clarify. I was just trying to get a clarification on the number of students. That's what I, I'd heard. So I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Thank you, Mayor. More than, um, more than anything, I, the fact that there's so many car washes in the near vicinity bothers me. I, I had not thought about the safety issue. I do know we've talked about sound before when we've talked about car washes, the vacuuming and the, we've asked that they've not be, um, backed up. I'm at, I don't think residency is an issue here, but we've, we've talked about sound before. That's not new, but I, um, there's three in a one mile radius, eleven, eleven total at three mile radius.
Laney, you might want to get some qual, uh, qualifications if Martin or Vance on the different types of car washes, because there's different type.
Oh, I know.
It's not similar. You have some that have wands, some that are drive-through by a gas station. Yeah, but I mean, you have a gas station one that you just drive through.
But I was thinking, they're still gonna have vacuums.
And then you, then you have others that are in that that use a wand, that you do it yourself, so that's not the same.
Same sound. It's still the, the, the number of other car washes is what bothers me.
If I may interject, that was one of the comments that the planning and zoning commission shared was the different types of car washes and one of the reasons why they were accepting of this. But completely understand that, you know, the number is still the number.
It would be kind of like saying, okay, we got six restaurants in an area, one's a fast food, one's a full service, you know, that.
Any other questions, comments?
Can we pull up the elevations?
No, sir.
I saw that there was recommendations on, from the P and Z, on approving this with some kind of rider on it around materials or on?
Similar look.
Correct. That's been a common condition for conditional use permits on new buildings.
Got it. And then, um, on screening and landscaping, there was no issues, no, no concerns, the, the plans met scope and the rules that we have right now?
No issues with compliance on landscaping.
This is just a general comment, and I don't know what the rules are, and Darren will probably opine with, I can't remember what the bill was two, three sessions ago, but I just, I struggle with this. I agree with member aid. Car wash is not the thing people are clamoring for, but this is a free society, and we're all capitalists, I think. And, uh, we're gonna support industry, but, I mean, in six years, this thing is gonna look dated. It's just gonna look like every other suburb, and it's just gonna be meh. I don't, I don't know else to say. And so it's just what the architecture is. And I just wish, when this part of the UDC rewrite, if we can start addressing, because this is a main corridor in the city, you know what I mean? And, and so I'm gonna approve it. I have not really turned down with P and Z moved item, but I think one time in three or four years. But I just, this is more for the staff's disqualification. It's just, I know it complies, it's great, but six years from now, I don't think it's gonna be anything we're gonna write home about. It's just frustrating, and we need, we're gonna have another umpteen car washes between here and the end of the decade, and they're all gonna have different styles, they're all gonna be different types, and they're all gonna make different noises. And, uh, it's just, if there was a little more uniformity, I think it would work with all the other elements the city works on and tries so hard via Pearland prosperity and all the other dang plans that we have. And so I just, a general comment, when you guys are working through that UDC rewrite, something that at least has a little bit of uniformity would be helpful. Thank you to the applicant. Thank you for the staff for working on this, and I look forward to seeing Mr. Carwash coming soon.
Questions, comments?
Anyway, I guess just a comment about the hydrochloric acid. I dumped that in my pool, and don't take a deep breath when you open the gallon jug, because that'll get you. But, um, yes, I don't, I don't have a, a issue with that, and I haven't heard, heard anything.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Just out of curiosity, I've seen a sign on North Main that says, Mr. Carwash coming soon. Uh, is there any relationship to y'all?
I'm sorry, on North Main?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and I live in the Houston area, so you mean Houston area, Maine or Pearland?
North Main and Pearland. We have, uh, five eighteen that runs east and west. We have highway thirty-five that we call Main Street.
Like near Silver Lake?
Uh, no, 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 no. This is on the east side, east of the railroad tracks, highway thirty-five.
I don't know at the moment.
Not related.
Also coming soon.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so it's hydrofluoric acid, slightly different acid. But I did pull up the CDC report on it, and it said, out of the estimated one hundred and thirty-four thousand workers employed by the car wash industry, um, there was only one fatal incident with hydrofluoric acid. There were forty-eight chemical burns, but, uh, some of them were not, uh, related to the car wash employees or being on site. So it doesn't seem like that, that is a huge issue. It looks like there's a bigger issue associated with car washes with, uh, the PFOS, which is, I think, an issue everywhere across multiple industries, uh, from beauty to car washes to, I mean, just PFOS isn't everything, and it's becoming a really big issue. But aside from that, I, my, I do have a concern about the noise level, but I, I'm trying to put it in perspective for myself. I don't know if anyone on staff knows this, but if I was standing on the side of the road on, on Broadway, um, what would the decibel level be if I'm, let's say, ten feet off the road or fifty feet off the road? I'm just kind of curious what, what I would expose myself to noise-wise.
To be quite honest, I'm not a noise level expert. So, you know, but I, I can tell you that the noise level on five eighteen with the number of vehicles that come through there, through that corridor, is probably going to be higher than what you would hear off of, uh, the vacuums or the.
That's kind of what I was trying to gauge, yeah, is, is will this business actually act as kind of a buffer for the noise?
It's more of a transition.
So, okay, maybe this is a Darren question then over here. So I, I was reading that, um, so what's considered to be generally a nuisance noise would be something above seventy decibels, but what is our ordinance?
No, actually, under state law, it's a presumption to be a nuisance if it's eighty-five decibels or higher.
Okay.
And that's measured from the point of where you're hearing the noise, not from the property.
Eighty-five, okay.
So, and then the city's ordinance is actually a little bit different standard. It's a reasonable person's standard. And so, um, and whether or not it interferes with the use and enjoyment in somebody else's property. So it's not based on a decibel standard. And, and just to clarify, under the state law, that is a rebuttable presumption that eighty-five decibels is a nuisance, so it can be rebutted, uh, by appropriate evidence.
That's, okay, because I think eighty-five is where you start experiencing hearing, uh, damage and stuff like that. That's, that's really interesting.
And, and as he mentioned, it's, it's from where the person is hearing it. So if they're inside a building and they're hearing it, it's the eighty-five inside the building, not.
Versus, right, because I know that we've in the past, uh, made efforts to limit, let's say, uh, encroachment of light, for instance, on properties and stuff, but I just don't know beyond, you know, additional like vegetative screening, that we could even say, hey, you can't produce a certain number of decibels. Is that even something that we could try to?
Many of these is being built around the country. I'm quite sure that their decibel level has been addressed.
Member Hernandez, I don't want to speak for the engineer, I'm sorry, it's Lawrence from Legal. I don't want to speak from the Mr. Carwash group, uh, and the engineers may have a better answer of what their decibel level reading is at the blowers or at the vacuums. Uh, as Mr. Coker indicated earlier, there is a state standard, but that state standard is an unreasonable noise from the emitting eight area to the residence. And, and I think the reason why you didn't see this particular, um, standard that is often included in front of the P and Z is because there weren't residences, uh, next to this or adjacent to this property. It was commercial uses. Well, on the west side, it's in the ETJ. Um, and then south of it, it was going to be, uh, commercial uses. And I believe on the right, it's zoned commercially, so P and Z did not do that because you're not gonna have eighty-five decibels going into somebody's home.
Got it.
So, and if it's an approved car wash operating within means, one would assume that the rebuttable presumption has been rebutted. It's doing what it's supposed to do.
All right. Uh, well, I, I share, uh, I guess a similar sentiment to member Cam Carr in that I, I just, you know, I don't know that this is gonna hold up well. It's on our main thoroughfare through the, you know, the center of town. I'm generally against car washes. I voted for a few of them. I don't really know. It's just, uh, I've said, as long as we have the authority to kind of dictate what things look like and the feel and so forth. Car wash is kind of one of my carve-outs of, once it's a car wash, it's real hard to be something else. That being said, the car washes that I have approved actually have been pretty good. I think business citizens, if you will. So I'm, I'm waning a little bit here, but I don't know. We'll, we'll see where the cards fall, Mayor. I'm, I'm real torn on this one, but I appreciate you being here. Uh, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments from council? It's kind of interesting. I drive and I see almost all of these new car washes over the last several years, and every single one of them are busting with business, uh, at the time you drive by. So to the point that, you know, I know people may not quote want them, but they're using them. They're spending their dollars there because they're full. One, I go to on a regular basis, have to sit and wait. So, yeah, so I mean, it's, 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 it's a busy business wherever they go. Someone in the marketing of car washes knows what's good and what's not. Anyway, so it'd be interesting, yeah.
And I guess I'll add one more thing. One of the things that I think really changed my mind, Mayor, on car washes, not completely changed my mind, uh, but has helped, is, uh, I think, to the point that was made earlier by the gentleman here, um, from the school, that car washes actually, from my understanding, end up helping more than they hurt in many respects because they do end up capturing the water, they keep it out of our, our stormwater system, uh, things of that nature. So I, I think that there's an argument to be said there from the environmental impact perspective that car washes are better than having residents in, in your neighborhood, uh, member Carbones, old neighborhood, my old neighborhood. For instance, all of those feed into a neighborhood lake, and that was a, a big concern, that you have people using whatever chemicals and washing all the oil and stuff off their cars, and it's going directly into our waterways. So that, that has been one of the things that's kind of helped to change my thinking on car washes. So I did want to.
That was actually a question I was gonna ask the engineer. Um, you mentioned reuse or recycling of the water. How does that work with this car wash?
Well, I'm a civil engineer. I don't really get into the technical part of that, but basically, from my knowledge, it, there is a tank that all the water is drawn to, and it's recycled. How long it's recycled for, I'm not exactly sure unless, Warren, you have some more information? No, Warren does have more information on that square. Basically, I know that the, the material is recycled for quite a few uses before it would be discharged at all. And as far as the other, you know, this was brought up in plant commission before too, and one of the plant commission members actually did a very good job of explaining all the other car washes, and I know it's been brought up before, but I think even some detailers were even listed in that as, as part of, you know, some of the uses that were similar. So, you know, like we're saying, it's not exactly comparing apples to apples with all the different, different ones. And Mr. Carwash, as far as the, uh, you know, any possible noise issues, you know, they're, they're very willing to work with everyone to make sure that there aren't, they want to be good neighbor. They don't want to have any issues with any, any neighbors complaining about, about that, you know. They want to be good neighbor, and, you know, they've done other things, you know, if there has been any other issues, you know, especially with screening, uh, they're more than willing to do whatever they need to do.
With that, Martin, do you recommend any additional things, uh, other than what P and Z recommended on the screen?
So we were just having a brief, uh, conversation, Vance and I and Lawrence. If water regulation is something that is desired by council, that's something that, uh, you know, our staff on a technical level can definitely work out with the applicant. If some additional sound mitigation is desired, might, uh, say that the applicant and staff should work together through the permitting process to provide some additional, uh, screening on the southern property line in order to provide the adjacent neighbor some additional sound mitigation and sound buffering, uh, especially because that is where the blowers are as the vehicles exit. But, you know, pertaining to giving exact measurements on, uh, those, those items, I'm afraid I don't have additional guidance on specifics for what those should look like.
All right. Last call, questions, comments? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing.
Is there interest in adding additional sound buffering items as directed by staff? I'm willing to do it. I don't know if anybody else is.
You're going to get to put it on the table. So that's where I was going to go and that's where that would go.
Okay. All right. You guys, if you want to...
Honestly, I would rather see more on 518, but, you know, I just think comparatively, the noise level of, if they were just exposed to 518, I think it would be a greater noise exposure.
This site will have to comply with the corridor overlay district, so it'll have enhanced landscaping as a minimum.
Yeah, but, you know, I like to see beautiful 518.
As we all do.
All right. With that, we will close this public hearing. Move to new business item number two. Mr. Kamkar, would you place it on the table? We know for sure we have the PNZ recommendation that we need to add to it. And if you feel like some others, let's go there.
So Resolution R 2023-CUP 2319, as presented with the additional facade items and sound mitigation as directed by staff. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Darren, does that suffice for direction to staff on the sound mitigation?
I don't think there were any specifics with respect to sound mitigation, so I think that's pretty vague.
He said facade and sound mitigation, as presented by staff.
Correct, but I don't believe staff presenting any sound mitigation. They just said that was an option that was available.
Yeah, I said I didn't have specifics on what that sound mitigation would be, just that...
Can we add a concrete wall on the south property line? That would match their facade.
It's an option.
And Mayor members of council just feel obligated to mention, so the property to the south is zone general business. And just going over some correspondence that I've actually had with them, we've...
How long?
We're throwing a concrete wall to the south side that's vacant property that who knows when it'll develop. Like, I struggle with that. That wall's going to have to be maintained. How tall is it? How wide is it? Who's going to paint it? We got to throw stucco on it. Like, I don't know. And all because it's a southerly, I don't know. I struggle with that.
I'm surprisingly with Member Carbone on that. I think that it can be something that can be worked out at the time if it is developed. I mean, it's been so long, it hasn't.
I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. That being said, there's going to be 500 parents at some point that may come up here and raise a little bit of noise or whatever. I mean, two people showed up on a notice period, enough to come over here on a vacant lot.
Well, can we ask, since the applicant is still standing there? And I know maybe you're not qualified to speak on behalf of the, in, I guess, the entire, I don't know if it's the corporation, whoever has it set up, but, I mean, would you be willing, if they developed in the future, to have that conversation? Because I think there could also be a potential for cost sharing there as well. I don't see that they would be forced to take on the full burden of that if it's really the ask of the school. I mean, maybe they made the point that it's not even there.
Can I add to that real quick?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we would definitely be willing to look at that at a later time if it's really an issue. Right now, to put that kind of restriction on the site would be, I think, really difficult without knowing what the decibels really are, how big of a wall, how high of a wall. I mean, there's just a lot that would have to go into that.
In fairness, the applicant didn't even show up, but citizens in the community did, in fairness to the discussion. And I can't do anything about nano-droplets. The blowers are acknowledged to be at the south side of the property line. They're acknowledged to make a lot of noise, and they brought up that item as a valid concern. I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just saying, in terms of people who are saying that this is a concern, I have two citizens here who've done that.
Well, sure. I understood. And, you know, like we say, Mr. Car Wash is more than willing to work with if it becomes an issue. And I don't think, I think Mr. Car Wash would be fine if that was put in as stipulation as part of the approval that they would be willing to work with staff on this. And also, if it becomes an issue in the future as to what recommendations or remedies could be done at that time. I mean, this has never been brought up as an issue up to this point as well, so there has been many. There's been a lot of time that this could have been brought up at that point as well.
There's been no citizens that have had the chance to give input either.
Well, they could have had Plant Commission to, I mean...
Well, they did. And fair enough. Why don't we just, why don't we just put a two-year? If they don't go build their thing in two years, they don't go do their school, you guys are off the hook. But if they go build it tomorrow and they feel like there's a sound issue, I mean, maybe that's the answer is there's nothing there now. That's a fair comment, but...
I think, yeah, that's kind of something I was looking at was, we may or may not have something. And at the same time, it might be enhanced vegetation rather than a wall. I'll tell you all the time, I've asked this, I've asked, and I've never had a good answer. What is so magical about a six-foot wall, six-foot masonry wall, that suddenly, out of nowhere, stops all sound? It doesn't. But vegetation, it might actually get a little bit taller and actually do, having a stipulation that there's something to work out with the property owner to the south, put some time limit on it. We have a time limit on the CUP already for one year. They could have, again, what your plan is, but may not happen in a reasonable timeframe.
I don't like the idea of a wall necessarily, but I agree with you on the enhanced vegetation potentially. You know, we've seen, you know, like juniper trees, like those vertical juniper trees and stuff called sound barriers and things, large bushes, cypress or something like that, yeah. I mean, so I think that would be less expensive. And, you know, the, I feel for the business owner because they would have to have a sort of retainage over a two-year period to, you know, potentially put this in. And I don't know that, I don't know that, I don't know that that's fair or...
I think the owner would, or Mr. Car Wash would be willing to, you know, even at this point, to address by having additional vegetation, whether that be pinniferous trees or shrubs, like you were talking about, that we could work that out with staff to actually do that at this point even.
Holly and they go up 18 feet all row right there. I mean, it's green and it's not a brick wall. It's only six foot or even eight foot long.
Mayor, I just want to make two comments. One, Mayor Berry wants to plant trees, so take note of that.
Yes, yes.
And, and two, Member Coza, that concrete wall was at Killen's Restaurant, not at our hotel.
But it ran onto a corner of your property.
Duly noted. Duly noted, for the record.
All right, I'll try this again. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R 2023-CUP 23-19 with guidance on facade maintenance as well as a enhanced vegetative area on the southern border mutually agreed to between the staff and the applicant. So moved.
Did that give you better guidance, Mr. Coker?
It's better.
One that we can do.
Well, is it, but, I'm sorry, Mayor. If it were me, I would say enhanced is one more bush. So do we need to specify height or something like that?
I believe the direction would sort of work with, in agreement with staff. I think to the point that staff and the property owner can come to an agreement on what would be sufficient. If the council wants that specificity, you can, but I think right now so much of it is speculative and everything we're talking about is speculative.
I trust the staff would want just one more bush.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a second on that?
We...
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we have motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? I believe this is actually a motion, not a motion to amend. It's a full motion. So with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, we will move to public hearing number three. Martin, same thing. If you'll read into the record the reason for the public hearing and then move into the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So public hearing number three is a request by Duplanis Design Group PC, represented by Sidney Rich, applicant on behalf of BW Shadow Creek LLC, owner for approval of a conditional use permit for auto repair minor use on approximately 0.7308 acres of land within the commercial district of the Shadow Creek Ranch Planed Unit Development. This property is generally at 11219 Shadow Creek Parkway. So again, taking a look at the aerial and zoning map, you can see that this is a piece of property out in front of an office building that faces out onto Shadow Creek Parkway. Is all within the Shadow Creek Plan Development with the exception of the property across the street, which is in the general business district. The majority of this area is within the retail offices and services. And then you can see there are fast food uses on either side of the property, an office to the rear, and then some drainage and undeveloped property to the south. Taking a look at the other auto repair facilities within the, within the area, we have three within one mile, 11 within two miles, two of those are outside of Pearland, and then 20 within three miles, and 10 of those are outside of Pearland's jurisdiction in that three-mile area. So taking you through a little bit of history for this site, in 2017, we had an approved conditional use permit for a car wash for the entirety of the original Lot D. In 2018, Lot D was developed half with a intention to subdivide. And then in 2020, you had the conditional use permit approved for an auto wash on just the portion of the property that they are looking to develop today. In 2022 of July, we had an approval for the previous auto repair use. Following that CUP's approval, a commercial permit was submitted, but the permit was delayed by the need to plat the property, which also required a variance for the plat. The plat variance was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in September 18th, but the CUP expired in July of 2023. So this is a view of that portion of the property looking north towards the office. And then this is the proposed site plan again for the auto repair facility. This is a view of their landscape plan. And we have several views of their overall elevations. Nice rendering, view of the back of the building. So this use meets the established criteria for approval of a conditional use permit. It's consistent with the future land use designation and the comprehensive plan. And then staff previously had two conditions that were approved in the prior CUP and those conditions carry forward. The conditions are to have large shade trees planted along the west and east property line to screen the adjacent property from the service bays. That the large shade trees be provided with the total caliper inches equal to one inch for each 15 foot of lot length or width with a minimum planting of two inches. And then number two is a continuous evergreen hedgerow with heights not to exceed four feet. Shall be provided along the north property line to screen adjacent properties from service bays, provided that if the pipeline easement holder does not agree to any plantings within the boundary of the easement, then this condition shall be void upon receipt of confirmation from the easement holder. And just to help with that question, I don't believe we have received that letter, so this condition is still a valid condition with this recommendation for the CUP. Again, Planning and Zoning Commission had their public hearing and heard this report. They recommended approval with a four to zero vote with the proposed conditions as provided. That, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
Thank you for that. Is the applicant present? Do you have a presentation? Okay. Are you here for questions? And did both of you sign up to speak? Because we have two... Okay. We'll probably call, we'll probably go ahead and call on you, whether you want to speak or not. We, that way we can satisfy calling on them. So, so we'll move right into those wishing to speak for or against the proposed request can go and give your name and address in three minutes to speak. So if you'll do that, you must be Max. Hang on a second. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is John Davis with Express Oil Change. We will be the ultimate use on that property and we are very excited to be here. I know we, a little bit of history of this is, like you mentioned earlier, we've already been approved through Plant Commission and Council once. But because of the plat requirement, there was a minimum lot requirement to plat, so we needed to get a variance at that point. So by the time that occurred, the year-long process had gone past. And so we're back. So you guys have any questions? I'm here to answer them.
Thank you for that. Go ahead. Call on Max.
All right, Max, if you make your way to the podium, state your name and address. We'll give you three minutes to speak. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Max Manutieri and I live in Sugar Land, 6703 Matthews Way. And I'm actually owner of the very next building auto repair shop to that lot. First, I'd like to thank the City Council that you gave me this chance to express my opinion. And second of all, I'd really like to meet and talk with this owner that I believe they are very brave that they want to put, they want to invest on the property, risky property that just bought 300 to 400 to another auto repair shop that they've been there for 15 years. And I'm not going to say that the city would approve or not if there is a need for another auto repair or oil change business on that area. Because again and again, it's about 300, 400 square feet, I mean, 300, 400 feet from each other. If I was somebody in the city of Pearland, I would have stopped on this project on the beginning. And again, me, I don't see anything. Why? This business is going to be risky for both of us. That's competition. 300 to 400 for two auto repair shop? Come on. And we've been there for 15 years. And based, when I look at my business, we are not that busy to have another shop next to us. I wish that car wash would have been there. I would have been happy. I would have liked to invested on that one too. But auto repair shop, the both is going to hurt, both. I think if the people that live around that area, it's not that many people live on that area. If you look at the map, you see not that many. Behind us, nobody. In front of us, to the right, is a subdivision. Not that many people live around. We are very next to 288. There is not even one house on that area. I wish them luck if the city approved that project. I really wish them luck. Auto repair shop next to each other? Wow. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Max. Do you have another one on this one? Okay, good deal. All right. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, second attempt. Third and final attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no others, we'll move to City Council for questions, comments, and concerns. Anybody have a question or comment? Yes, sir.
So I remember Kamkar wasn't here for the original vote, so we'll see how this goes. It's your opportunity now to vote on it.
Can we get a recitation of what that first vote was?
I believe it was unanimous. I pulled it up. Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, yep. I thought you were raising your hand. Sorry.
I mean, it's been approved before. We pushed them back through the plating process with variances, and it expired. And I get it, I'm in favor of competition. So thanks for willing to risk your capital. Before you do this, there might be one down the block that might be for sale. You can get better deal on it.
I'll leave that to the free market.
Yeah, and this is one of the reasons why I've called for, you know, when we do the UDC change, one, one year hard to have everything kind of in line. We need to have something in there because things go awry, or there's a plating, or there's an environmental issue that somebody has to work through. Next thing they, we know they're having to come back through here. I like, that's, that's a note I'd like to make sure that as we go back through the UDC process, how we, how we address CUPs and the time limit. I get having a time limit doesn't necessarily need to be unlimited, but you know, something there, or maybe the trigger is something a little bit different. If we force them back through the plating process, that ought to be a trigger to be able to move forward. So last call for questions, comments?
Really quickly for the applicant, there was no issues with the additional requirements as outlined here on the?
We agree with him.
All right. Seeing none, we will close this public hearing, move to new business item number three. Mr. Kozel, would you present it along with the conditions that staff and P and Z put on?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R two zero two-three dash CUP twenty-three dash two zero, with the conditions so noted as P and Z stated.
We have a motion and a second. We've had questions, comments, as well as staff report. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Protim Kosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. We have items A through H. Mr. Hernandez, if you would present consent agenda items A through H with the exception of H.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, did we have another one? Okay. I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through H with the exception of H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Thank you for that. There's no other items for citizens to speak on. If council will concur, we can dispense of item H, if you're okay with that, no objection. So with that, Mr. Kamkar, would you actually put it on the table? I know you asked for this to be sure if you'll do that, and we'll move right into it.
Yes, sir. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution R two zero two-three dash two-nine-zero, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Quick staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. This is a contract for our automated license plate reader camera system, which is through Flock Safety, covers thirty-one cameras. This is a annually renewable contract for up to five years. It locks in the, the cost we have before us for this coming year as well as the next four years, and that is always subject to budget approval each year. So the estimated amount annually is seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and we recommend the award of this contract to Flock.
Okay, very good. Mr. Kamkar, you pulled this. I'll start with you.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of quick items, and then we'll get moving. Chief, we, I think we put this together, what, a year or two years ago in reaction to some items with post-COVID and criminal crime safety issues, public safety issues. How many do we have deployed right now, these cameras?
So I have a couple of drone expert or Flock experts here with us tonight.
Okay, great.
Chief Randall and Captain Dunham can probably answer all your questions.
Awesome.
Good evening. We currently have thirty-one city-owned cameras throughout the city.
Awesome. And how are you guys measuring efficiency on this or effectiveness? Is there a couple of KPIs that you guys are using?
Sure. So we, we monitor stats pretty regularly as far as the number of alerts that we get and how they translate into traffic stops, arrests, you know, recovered firearms, vehicles, that sort of thing.
And how has that performed year-to-date? Do you have any statistics or data on that?
I do. Let me see, sorry. Thing logged out, of course.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, so year-to-date, we have a total of one thousand three hundred and thirty-one hits with a hundred and twenty-six arrests and two hundred and twelve charges filed.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to highlight the chief, I think, talked about this as something that we needed, and we did this two years ago, something that I really worked hard on, and the council really came along with it. It's really, really great that it's been effective. I hope that we have more folks HOAs and we, groups that are using that at the neighborhood level. And so I just want to congratulate and thank you guys for doing it. I feel like we're more effective. Guilty pleasure, as I look in the morning at about eight o'clock into the jail records, and you see Harris County Sheriff Office Holder, Fort Ben County, Galveston County, and so it is having an effect and it is working. I appreciate you guys working so hard on that.
Thank you.
And very, very excited to vote on this.
Captain Dunham, real quick, are we seeing numbers increase, decrease, leveling out? I know when they first went up, we had seemed like lots of hits immediately, but are we seeing that sustain? Or are we, what are we, what are we seeing month over month?
Yes, sir. So we have actually only been online for about twelve months total. So this went into effect June of last year, and the cameras slowly started coming online, going into full force towards the end of last year. So I would say we're still increasing as far as effectiveness. A lot of that is bringing on additional cameras through HOAs, MUDs, neighboring cities, those sort of things as well.
That's good. Follow-up to that, I know stolen vehicles and suspicious vehicles and those types of things are one thing, but you know, one of the human side of things is, you know, somebody that's lost, somebody with dementia or Alzheimer's gets behind the wheel and, and gone, and I've known these types of cameras. I don't know about here, but I know these types of cameras have spotted them, you know, their license plate, and you know, officers are able to intervene and get that person back home safely. Have we had those types of experiences as well?
I can't think of any off the top of my head, Mayor, but I do know that we have a wide variety of success stories, ranging from things along those lines to burglaries, robberies, stolen cars, stolen firearms, you name it. We've, we've been able to solve a lot of crimes, and not just from here, but throughout the whole region, just with the camera system.
Ms. Cade?
Captain, Captain Dunham, if the number, you said it's been online a little over a year?
Yes, ma'am. I think we were fully online at the end of November, November, December of last year was when our, our final cameras came through with tech stop permitting and everything else.
Is there any, anything to compare it to for the number of hits we've got, number of arrests? Is that, that a number you consider good number or?
Definitely. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we have definitely seen a large amount of success. Last year, like I said, we, we had very minimal data to actually show, but it's definitely increased. We have had great success throughout the calendar year, for sure, and we expect to only get more efficient.
Okay, thank you.
I can, I can add a little bit to that. We had over a hundred arrests in the last year, and warrants charged almost two hundred, you know, over about a dozen firearms seized, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of recovery property. So it's been very successful.
That's great. I love data. Thank you. I just wanted to hear some numbers. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Last call, questions, comments? Been a great program. More to come. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, we will move to new business item number four. Ms. Cade, if you would present item four, please.
Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R twenty, R twenty-two-three dash two-nine-four, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have fifteen ground storage tanks and six elevated storage tanks as part of our water system, and based on a conditions assessment that we conducted a few years ago, we took a look at each of those tanks, and now we're going through a systematic process of repair and recoating of those tanks, both the interior and the exterior. Tank coatings are scheduled to be addressed on a recurring basis, about every seven to ten years for the exterior, every twelve to fifteen years for the interior, and that maximizes the long-term life of those tanks, so we be sure to get the full life out of that infrastructure. This project addresses specifically the elevated storage tanks at our Bailey Water Well and our Cullen Well and the ground storage tank at the Magnolia Site. Additionally, through this, when we finish the coatings, instead of the, the Pearland Water Logo on these, we're going to also be complementing these with the local high school logos, as we had talked about a couple of years ago as we started this program. So on one side of the Bailey Elevated Tank, we'll have the Turner Railcats. On the other side, we'll have the Pearland Oilers, and the Cullen one, we'll get the Dawson Eagles logo. And then when we get through the cycle and get to the Kirby Plant in a few years, then we'll do the Shadow Creek High School as well. So for that, we did receive five bids, and we're recommending award to the lowest responsible bidder, CTECs, in the amount of one million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Mr. Eppson, open it up for questions, comments from council. I do want to thank staff for adding the high school component to that. We actually had a teacher, I believe, at Pearland High School that brought that request forward, said, hey, we've got the, if you go to small towns across Texas, what do they have? Water towers up above, it's got the mascot on it. Go this team, go Eagles, go whatever, you know, it's great, talking about our small town and recognizing our kids. So I think having that on there will help different areas of town. But those that are watching, I want to say this publicly, we're getting to every high school in town. We will, just as mentioned, Shadow Creek is not in this round, but when we get to that water tower here in a few years, we'll do the same thing with the Sharks out there. So we're not missing anybody. We're trying to make sure that we do it all the way across town, but we want to recognize our kids and the great accomplishments that they do. Last call for questions or comments. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, Mr. Barry, would you place item five on the agenda?
Will do, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action, first reading of ordinance number five-three-two-dash-nine, so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to our ordinance, our flood damage prevention ordinance. I'm going to walk through why we're making this change at this point, as well as what the change is. So we have applied for and been contingent, contingency, contingently awarded a partnership project with Harris County Precinct Two for the Hughes Road Project that was part of our twenty-twenty-three bond program. And so they are committed to four point nine million of the total of about ten point three million dollar cost of that road project. In order to enter into an interlocal agreement on one of these partnership projects with Harris County, they require that we have our flood damage ordinance match five points of their requirements for flood damage prevention. We already matched them on four points, so it's really one area we have to, to change that. So we do adopt a flood plain management, measures with our flood damage prevention ordinance as a member of the National Flood Insurance Program. So that's why we have this in place in the first place. So what we're actually changing as part of this is that our current criteria is that the finished floor elevation for occupied structures must be one foot above the hundred-year flood plain. And, and then Harris County, their requirement is that the finished floor elevation must be at or above the five-hundred-year flood plain. So for about ninety percent of the applicable area in Pearland, our one foot above the hundred-year is more stringent. It's actually higher than the five-hundred-year requirement. There is about ten percent of our area that it would be the five-hundred-year flood plain that is, that is the higher point. So the change here is the higher between the two. So we keep our higher current standard, and then we add in that five, that ten percent of our area, the more stringent criteria where it's applicable from, from Harris County. So there is one other additional recommendation included in this, and that is to change the minimum finished floor elevation for critical structures from what we currently require at eighteen inches to a hundred, to, to twenty-four inches above the hundred-year flood plain. And that matches the International Building Code requirement on critical structures, and really it applies mostly to city facilities like our fire stations. And if we were to build a separate emergency operations center or something like that, that criteria would apply to those critical infrastructure facilities. So those are, those are the two changes, including in the, in the ordinance tonight that we have on for first reading. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think these are good changes, as well as it really doesn't have a negative impact. Most of the city is already meeting that or exceeding it in most cases. Ninety percent of the case, we're exceeding it, and we're not reducing that requirement. We're keeping it the same. So I like the change here, and especially, I think it's, it's a good change, but it's also another step closer to getting help from Harris County on a much-needed project.
Yeah, I think one other thing to add, it does avail us to future projects with Harris County as well. So not just this one, but we'll, we'll continue to try to work with them on other community projects.
And we've got, you know, trail projects and other projects throughout, and we've got to have these types of agreements in place, so it'll, won't slow us down on future. Questions, comments from council?
Just a question, a point of clarification for me, because on minimum measure number two, it says they require minimum detention rate of basically a half acre foot or acre detention for any new development. Is there a depth maximum you can go to? What's the, what's the rule there? Because I mean, if I, if I'm reading this properly, you know, for, ours is sixty-five, right? So if I'm, if I'm reading this properly, if you have an acre, because it's over an acre, right? So if you only have one acre foot of water detention possible, then you're taking up more, more than fifty percent of your property?
So, Roger, you following a question?
Yeah, yes, sir. I can answer that question.
I don't know, I don't know where you're.
Harris County requires zero point five-five acre per acre. That is, if you just imagine one acre site, then if you imagine creating a detention pond of one acre top, that will be zero point five-five. Our minimum requirement is zero point six-five, which is higher than zero point five-five. How it is calculated is based on the pre-developed flow and post-developed flow. So when you develop a land, you change the slope, you change the impermeable cover, so you send more water downstream. So when you send more water, we try to restrict it to the level that don't exceed the pre-developed flow condition. So the amount is calculated, and based on your development, it can be zero point six-five, seven-five, eight-five. And if you just assume mass, their current rate is about more than one acre foot per acre. So depending upon the way you design, depending on the property size, it varies from place to place, but minimum, absolute minimum is point six-five acre foot per acre.
We already exceed, so we exceed the requirement?
Yeah.
With our normal.
Yeah. I clearly misunderstood the, the minimum measure. But I understand your explanation. Thanks, Roger.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kosa?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, Mr. Patel, would you place item six on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consider impossible action, first reading of ordinance number one-six-three-one-dash-one, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for the first reading of Budget Amendment Number One. So Budget Amendment Number One, we do this time of year, every year. It's our, what we refer to as our annual carryover budget amendment, which most, most of what this does is it carries over fiscal year twenty-three funds. does is it carries over fiscal year 23 funds to pay for contracts and purchase orders and things we have coming to us that have been ordered but not yet received, or we haven't received the invoice, so that we pay for those out of FY23 funds that were part of the projections at the end of FY23. So it's not allocating any additional funds. It's funds that were already allocated, but just being carried over to fiscal year 24. It establishes basically our unaudited fiscal year 24 beginning fund balances. We move into the budget cycle because we adjust both the revenues and expenditures for what we know to date. And then just a couple of specifics on Budget Amendment Number One. The carryovers for the general fund are approximately 2.7 million, and for the enterprise fund, approximately 2.2 million. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any other questions about Budget Amendment One. Thank you.
Bring it to council for questions, comments, concerns. Pretty straightforward, actually. With carryovers this year, looking down through the list, we're either waiting on the invoice or getting the invoice out all the way across the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Francis, there you are. You're always there. Why am I looking for you? The temporary employee for your request, how is that, how long is that? Is that a year?
I believe that there's a time limit that we can have that employee. And I'm going to defer to Rachel to answer that.
Okay.
I don't know that information.
Typically, they can have a temporary employee for 90 days. Sometimes there are extensions granted.
Okay. So is that request then just for 90 days in employer? Does that include like other like software platforms or whatever it is? I'm just kind of...
It would be for personnel. There are no software involved in that. It's someone working in our records room that is touching each document.
But you're saying we can renew that every 90 days? We have to review it? Is that what we're saying? But it's, or the year is the total 75? Okay, got it. I'm really looking forward to this. You know, that's one of the things for me is sometimes trying to pull up historical information and stuff like that. So we can get another body in there to get it done and make it easier. Appreciate that. Thanks.
All right. Questions, comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Member Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving forward in our agenda, matters removed consent agenda, we've already handled that. Other business, there is none. Council, mayor issues for city council discussion, there are none. We do have one executive session item under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney, potential participation in class action litigation. With that, council will recess into exec session at 8:11. With that, council will recess into exec session at 8:11. ...